Hi, good evening, welcome. I'm Jeanne Marvin, the Rochester School Board Chair as of last week. And on behalf of the entire board, we're happy to have you here. I prefer, and I'm guessing many of you would too, if we could meet in person. Some of us feel that communication is more effective when we're speaking directly to a person instead of through a screen. I do want you to know though, that our school board members care about what you're saying. We are trying to listen. We are reading and reflecting on each email message, each phone call that we receive, and that we have been getting a lot of them. And we are interested in the many, many diverse perspectives and comments that we're hearing from our constituents. Also, part of the board plan that we agreed upon last fall was to continue having community engagement sessions throughout this school year. So this is going to be first of a number of listening sessions that we are committed to having. This session will focus strictly on the questions and the comments we've already received from you, as well as those that we get this evening. And they will appear in the chat function tonight. To help respond to those questions, we have members of our COVID advisory team here. Three of the members are Jen Arkey, Leah Bancroft, and Scott Scherden. And Leah, could you just explain briefly what our advisory team does?
Yeah, good evening, thanks Jean. So our COVID advisory team is made up of multiple partners. We have community partners with the Mayo Clinic, Olmsted County Public Health. We have school board members, union reps, cabinet members, and also Superintendent Munoz. And as you mentioned, Jen, Scott, and I are members of our district COVID team. So from the very beginning of the school year, we have been working with our community partners for all decisions that we've made in terms of close contact determination, contact tracing, keeping a good pulse on our county and our school data in terms of transmission and positive cases. So I believe the slide is showing here that we do meet every other week, and we do work as a team, and it is a community partnership as we look to how we manage COVID within the schools.
Great, thank you so much Leah. At this point, Kathy Nathan is going to help facilitate the conversation. And she will reaffirm that we know we're going to get many questions that we cannot answer this evening, but there will be a Q&amp;A published after it's over with questions and answers that you can look at at a later date. So at this time Kathy Nathan, the board's new vice chair, will greet you.
Good evening. So my name is Kathy Nathan, and I'm the vice chair of the Rochester Publics... Can you hear me?
We can now, yep, you were muted for a second.
So my name is Kathy Nathan, and I'm the vice chair of the Rochester Public School Board. And we just want to acknowledge before we get started, by the volume of questions that we've gotten, in addition to the emails and social media conversations, one of the themes that we're seeing is that we understand how hard this is for everybody involved, for our students, for our families, for our teachers and our staff. So we're going to do our best to address the answer, address the questions that you've sent in tonight. We have about 427 questions that you've submitted since Tuesday. And we've categorized them just for purposes of organizing our answers. And some of the most common themes that we've received are about the criteria and the data used, and the timeframes for the decisions on the learning models. The plans and timelines for middle and high school learning models. The role of the COVID advisory team, the superintendent and the board in decisions on learning models. Rochester's decisions versus other districts. The academic and social emotional health impacts on students. Staff concerns about model implementation and health and safety and vaccines. Now while we hope we get to more topics than that tonight, more questions, we recognize that we won't be able to get to all the questions, both that you've submitted and in the chat. So as we said, we're going to publish a document after this meeting to address the questions and the issues that have been submitted. So with that, let's get started. I'll ask for your patience, as I'm also responsible for popping up some information on the screen. So if you just give me a minute, I will put up our first slide. Everybody see that?
It's good.
Great. So I just want to talk about where we've been, so in a bit of a grounding. So the board had a conversation on January 5th where we approved a hybrid learning model for elementary with a rolling start. And that starts on January 19th, next Tuesday, for pre-K through grade two, and then grades three and five will still be in distance learning. February 1st, our pre-K through grade five will all be in hybrid learning. There will be a distance learning option available for elementary families throughout this whole timeframe. For secondary, we're beginning distance learning plus supports for grades six through 12, and that starts January 19th. When are we going to talk about these learning models again? So the January 19th school board meeting, which is next Tuesday, the superintendent will present a plan for the middle and high school learning model, as well as the metrics that will be used to determine when to move ahead to implementation. Then at the February 2nd school board meeting, we'll review the most recent COVID data for our community, and we'll discuss if and when to return to in-person learning for elementary and hybrid for secondary. So that, we have had a lot of questions about the decisions we've made so far, and then when the community can expect the next decisions. So we hope that this clears up some of the issues. So I also want to explain a rolling start, that was also a common question that we had. Why can't everybody come back to school in hybrid on January 19th at the elementary level? So the Safe Learning Plan, which is the plan that the governor and the Minnesota Department of Education gives districts to plan their, the structure of their learning during COVID, only allows three grades to come back into a building at a time. Then two weeks have to pass before the next three grades can return to the building. So on January 19th, we're starting with pre-K through grade two, and then two weeks later, February 1st, grades three to five come back. If we were to decide on February 2nd to move to an in-person learning model for elementary, it could not start until February 16th, because again, there has to be a two-week spacing between the last grade that came into the building, and then the implementation of the first grades of the next model. So February 16th for pre-K through grade two, and then two weeks later, March 1st, grades three through five. So that, we've also been asked, when is the first date we could anticipate possibly, should the board decide being in person? And that would start, a rolling start on February 16th. So those are some introductory ones we wanted to cover.
Kathy, if I could just add to that for a moment too, there were some questions about why the initial proposal was to bring elementary kids back on the rolling start hybrid, and then after four weeks to convert to full-time. We know that this community, that any community and any parents, they want to know what the plan is, and they don't want us to keep changing it. It's one of the most frustrating things, because there are so many things we can't control. So this board decided that we would promise as much as we could to bring the kids back hybrid, and then hopefully, after we'd gone through the hybrid cycle, we would still be able to bring them back sooner rather than later, full-time, face-to-face in the classrooms. We just didn't want people to assume that that was what was going to happen, because at this point, we don't know. It is still our goal however, to bring back elementary students face-to-face as soon as we safely can. We don't know what the numbers are going to be. And we'll talk about what the metrics are going to be on that later. So thank you for that.
So we're communicating on what the questions are in the chat, and what we're going to answer. So we have a question that's about to be published about our decision-making process. So the question is, other districts don't have to follow, or don't appear to follow the Safe Learning Plan, why are we much more conservative than other districts? And that was a really common question that we also received in the questions that you submitted in the past few days. So I'm going to address this separately with elementary, and then I'm going to address it with secondary. So the Minnesota Department of Health gives districts guidance about what data is to be used to make the learning model decision. And it starts with the county-level data, and that was the plan from the very beginning of the Safe Learning Plan, that there was a metric that if your cases in the county were below a certain level, you were able to lose, use a certain learning model. But in the governor's update in December 16th, he gave districts the option to look at multiple factors in addition to what the, to what the case rates were. So when the board was presented the information, the COVID advisory team recommended to the superintendent that based on the case rates in Olmsted County and some specifics in Rochester, which I'll pop up a screen on that in a minute, that their recommendation was that we start back to school in a hybrid model. Then the superintendent recommended to the school board that we begin into the, in the hybrid model first, and then move into the in-person model. And then we discussed what the board decided, which is to start with the hybrid model, and then at a later date decide about in-person. And here's some of the data that we saw that led us to that decision that was presented to us. Can everybody see my slide?
Yes.
So, okay, so at the January 5th board meeting, our 14-day case rate was 58.73. And since then, we've gotten updates from Olmsted County that it's actually gone up. As Graham Briggs described to us, it's hovering around 60. That is still higher than the 50 that was the cutoff for being in distance learning. And at the time that we made the decision on January 5th, the other recommendation was to wait until we saw what the effects of the holidays were. There was a case rate spike in Thanksgiving, and there were concerns that we would have a similar spike in early to mid-January. And the data on the impact of the holidays will probably be available to the COVID advisory team at the January 21st meeting, which will give them, us, time to make a recommendation to the superintendent, that will then feed into the discussion at the January 2nd, at the February 2nd school board meeting. Here's some of the other data that was presented to us. The COVID cases in Olmsted County and in Rochester are higher today when they were in October, when we were last in a hybrid learning model. So if you look at the low point before the November spike of where we were, and you look at where we are today, we're not even back to the level that we were before the Thanksgiving spike. And that was concerning to our public health and our medical experts, that the transmission in the community was still considered to be high. Also, when you look at the current data, 82% of the COVID-positive cases in Olmsted County are in the Rochester ZIP code served by Rochester Public Schools. So those are the 55901, 2, 4, and 6. Now you ask, a lot of people ask us why Byron thinks that they can take their students to school. Well, if you look at their case rate of 269 per 1,000 people, it is, you know, less than half our lowest case rate. So they felt that they would be able to take students to school because the community transmission in the population they serve is much lower than what it is for Rochester. And finally, we have to look at the impacts...
Can I interrupt in a minute?
Yep.
The website that you're using, I think is a really useful one. Olmsted County Health Department has a COVID dashboard, and if you look under daily case counts and weekly case counts by ZIP code, we learned that Olmsted County, you know, it's a big place, but we can look at the numbers specific to Rochester, and then compare them with some of the districts around us. Also in Olmsted County, but with very different spread. Sorry, I keep interrupting. And also, let me just say one more thing. I'm watching this now, and it looks as if... I just want to make sure people understand that all of these slides were prepared after we got your questions. Starting Monday, questions came in, and people did a lot of work to make sure that we could give good answers to those questions. That's where the slides came from. We did not do them weeks ago. This is trying to give the best answers we can to the questions that are coming from the community.
And it's also based on the same data that the board received at the January 5th meeting when we made our decision.
Exactly.
So the last one are the age breakdown of the staff and students. So 71% of the Olmsted County cases are from the age groups of our teachers and staff. And, you know, we can have, we can address some other questions about the risk to adults versus the risk to children, but 16.3% of the Olmsted County cases are from the age groups of our students. So this is some of the, the data that fed into the decision about the hybrid model instead of in-person. And I think that's the comparison that's being made with us and other districts, that so many other districts are going in-person. So as I said, the governor's plan allows us to implement a learning model less restrictive. And I said that the COVID advisory team recommended that we implement a hybrid model for January 19th. And I just want to point out that that's one step less restrictive than what Olmsted County data would indicate. I'm going to go back to the previous slide. So if the governor did not give us the authority to go to a less restrictive learning model, we would be in distance learning for all students. The governor gave us permission to go to hybrid or in-person, based on what we saw from our local data, and the recommendation was to go one level below, which was hybrid learning. So when you compare it to other districts, so the 14 districts that are in our peer group, based on the size of district, are returning to school with an in-person learning model, except for Minnetonka that has a little separate approach. But when you look at their 14-day case rate, it is between 30 and 50. Ours, remember, was over 50, approaching 60. So they're making the same choice as we are, except they get to start at the 30 to 49 level, and they get to go one step down, one step least restrictive, which is in-person. So this is really driven by the higher level of community transmission in Olmsted County and Rochester compared to what those other cities are doing. Now, can I just talk about secondary really quick? Because we also have had questions about why we have a different learning model than other, than other districts for secondary. This was a very, very, I don't want to say popular question, but a question that was asked perhaps the most in the questions that we, that we've gotten before today. Aren't all other districts sending their middle and high school students back to in-person school? And the answer is no. The 14 districts that are either larger than Rochester Public Schools or in our same peer group, and again, based on our size, are all currently using a distance learning model, and are continuing that model on January 19th. Minnetonka is the only district that has approval from their school board to implement hybrid learning, and then eventually in-person learning. But they have said that they will not implement that until they get approval from their county health department, that their community transmission is low enough to allow implementation of the model. So for secondary, Rochester Public Schools is doing exactly what all of our peer districts What do we have next in the chat? Okay, so is our district and other districts pushing for higher priority for teachers and staff to receive the vaccine? Superintendent Munoz, can you talk a little bit to that, about what you're doing with other superintendents on that, in terms of advocacy?
Well, yes, thank you Kathy. I can say pretty much every superintendent across the state of Minnesota has really been being very vocal about this, and really trying to get our staff vaccinated, because we know that really will make it much safer for them. I guess the good news is, and I think Mr. Briggs shared this Tuesday night at the board meeting, that they're looking, hopefully around February, they'll start getting to what they call the 1B level of vaccination. And however, I will say, I've just recently heard coming out at the federal level that the push now is to make the available vaccines to those who are 65 and older, older than 65. So we are advocating to get our educators vaccinated, and have been working internally on, you know, if vaccines are available, how would we roll that out? And have been having conversations with Mayo Clinic and Public Health on if vaccines are available to either Mayo or to Public Health, how we would partner with them to make them available to our staff.
Great.
And Ms. Nathan, I think the superintendent was saying, of course we care about our staff, you know, we love them as individuals. But as important to our families may be, if we don't have teachers, our schools can't work. And we've gotten a number of messages and questions, maybe that'll come up tonight, about why can't you just get subs? Every school district is challenged with getting people who will substitute teach. And in Rochester especially, the majority of our subs are retired teachers. They are not coming back into our schools until they've been vaccinated. So if our regular teachers get sick and can't teach, we really don't have backup. So we're trying to be very protective of them, partly because we value who they are, and partly because if we don't need them, our classes can't run.
Okay. All right, so, oh, sorry, I lost my screen. Okay, I'm looking at some of the questions in the chat, and I just want to be clear that when I say that we got 427 questions, I can assure you, I have read all 427 questions, and I have categorized them into about 90 different categories. I assure you, we will not be able to get through all of those categories tonight. So we're trying to prioritize what we're seeing on the chat, and the, the volume of the questions in each category that we got in the original 427 questions. So all of the categories of questions are going to be answered, if not tonight, afterwards. So we're trying to balance those people who are joining us live, and maybe haven't submitted questions for the first time, or didn't submit questions before, with the people who submitted them before. So that's what, that's what we're working on. So I'm looking at the chat, and, sorry, it keeps jumping for me. Is it possible for all K5 to go back in-person February 16th if the school board approves as such on February 2nd? I don't want to misspeak, because I want to make sure that my date, my data is correct. So yes, if the school board were to decide on February 2nd to use an in-person, in-person learning model for elementary, we would begin on February 16th, but it cannot be all of K5 according to the governor's Safe Learning Plan. There still has to be a two-week spacing between three grades at a time. So that's why it's pre-K through two, and then two weeks, and then three through five. That's something we don't have an option to, to waive. Am I correct on that, Mike?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right, so, we have a question about a comprehensive plan on how they will work in the coming school years to get our children caught up. I don't know that I can speak for the upcoming years, but I can talk about some of the plans that are in place, at least for monitoring what is commonly being called in the literature "learning loss," and then some immediate plans for the summer. So as you might remember, we don't have MCA data from last, from last spring, because those were canceled. I was just on a call with the commissioner today with school board members, and she said that the plan right now is to give MCAs, but there is a new presidential administration and a new Department of Education, and we don't know what decision they will make at the federal level about these statewide tests. So whether we will have a year, an annual assessment on student performance this year, we don't know. However, in the meantime, Mike?
Yes, I did just want to jump in here and say, we, we do give the NWA or another similar norm assessment, so we do have that data. And then we also, teachers keep what we call formative assessment data. So we do have data on our students, even if we don't do the MCA state assessment. So we do have that, and we are having commerce, you know, we provide summer school every summer, but we've already had conversations already, and we'll continue those conversations on what summer school will need to look like this coming summer.
Right. And there's actually a specific survey that's already gone out, and the survey is structured to ask teachers and support professionals and other staff to identify the specific needs that students have because of this COVID learning year. And so they don't just want to create a summer school based on what they think students need, they're going to base summer school around what teachers and staff are telling them, or the areas of learning loss and other issues for summer school. So that process is, is underway. So that takes us through the summer.
Kathy, and thank you for that. And, you know, and as you, both of you mentioned, our teachers are very aware of what kids are getting, what they might need, and they are already having discussions that when students come back this spring, next fall, they need to alter how they teach, what they teach, so that the kids do have that kind of entry, and do have that kind of makeup work, so that they can get the kind of experience they need. They're looking at prioritized learning. What are the critical skills that students really need? Because those have to come first. Teachers have quite a bit of autonomy to do additional learning and other kinds of experiences for their kids, but they're going to be focused on what are those prioritized objectives and, and skills that our kids need? And if, if they missed out on some this year, and they, they know how to do those kind of assessments to discover where kids are, they will take them from where they are when they show up in school, to where they need to be. There's no question that we are keenly aware that this is tough on everybody, and that this year of education has not been what we would ever want. But I am convinced that our staff is really going to step up and do everything they can to help every student get to where they need to be.
I'm, sorry, I'm having trouble scrolling with the chat. So I want to make sure that we address... Sorry, it's hard to read at the same time that I'm trying to decide which one to address. Why don't, I'm going to pop up some slides on the plans for secondary, because I want to make sure that we, again, that was, I think, probably the one that we had the most questions on. So I'm going to put this slide up, and we'll just walk through that really quickly. So just to clarify, why are middle and high schools still in distance learning on January 19th? And that was because the Safe Learning Plan only allowed us to move to in-person or hybrid learning regardless of the COVID case counts in the county. learning regardless of the COVID case counts in the county. And then the guidance for secondary students did not change. If it was above 50, we needed to stay, it was recommended that we stay in distance learning. And at the day of the board meeting when we made our decision, the 14-day case rate was 58.73. We do have options though, and this is where we might be able to consider moving to a hybrid or in-person model for middle and high school. The district can consult with a regional support team to consider dialing forward to a less restrictive learning model. We did consult with our regional support team on January 4th, and they recommended, along with Olmsted County Public Health, that we reassess the data in mid-January to allow time for a post-holiday surge. So that leads to the timeframe that we're on now. On January 19th, the superintendent is going to present the proposed secondary model to the school board, along with suggested metrics for the board to evaluate when considering an implementation date for the secondary model. So we'll have more information about our COVID case rate and see what it means, what it, and see what COVID case rate we would be comfortable with returning to a hybrid or an in-person model for middle and high school, but we would not make that decision until February 2nd. So these, this is the kind of information that the school board is hearing about the middle and high school learning model data. So there's a number, when we talked about the elementary, and Graham Briggs shared this at the January 5th meeting, he made a really clear distinction between the transmission rates in elementary students and the transmission rates in secondary students. And there's a cutoff age of around 10 to 15 years old, where if you're under that age, you transmit the virus less, and if you're over that age, you transmit the virus more. And those studies are supported by the CDC and the World Health Organization, and as Graham Briggs put it, for a 16-year-old, there will be more risk to that teacher, and for that matter, other students in that class. We'd already talked about what other districts are doing as far as sending their students back to middle and high school. And so we're using that same process to decide about middle and high school than all of these other districts. But we do have a plan, and I think we've talked about, it's coming on January 19th. And here's some of the information that the superintendent presented to us at the January 5th meeting. If we were to go to a hybrid model, students would be divided into two groups. One group of students would attend school on Monday and Tuesday, and the other group would attend on Thursday and Friday. There would be no in-building learning on Wednesday, and that would continue to be used for supports like we're doing with Distance Learning Plus. And students would go back to an eight-period day instead of the current block schedule. And we've also been asked, you know, how quickly are we, are we ready to implement it? Well, some of the outstanding issues is how to space classrooms and schedule hallway movements between classes, because under a hybrid model, we still have to maintain a three-foot distance between students and a six-foot distance between teachers and students. We still have to evaluate staffing issues. There's a number of middle and high school teachers who will not be able to return to in-building teaching until they're vaccinated because of underlying health conditions. And in those cases, teachers actually have to provide medical evidence that they fall into that high-risk category. Issues about synchronous versus asynchronous learning and managing cameras and monitoring of students online while teaching in the classrooms, and those conversations are still happening, happening with, with our teachers and our administrators. And then there are surveys out right now for all teachers about the next model, and then possible some other planning groups that are doing planning for the secondary model. And as I said, we'll discuss the middle and high school learning models again on Tuesday, and then again on February 2nd. So I wanted to make sure that we had covered that one. What do we have in the chat?
Kathy, while you're looking there too, let me just say that there have been people, and maybe these questions are coming up in the chat, saying, why didn't you know which ones, how many of your teachers would come back to school, how many would not, how many have underlying conditions? We have been surveying them by buildings, we've been getting those numbers, but the situation was very different last spring than it is now. We know a lot more now than we did then. And it's not like people have to make a decision about their own health, the health of their family, their willingness to risk getting sick, and then they have to stick with that decision forever. So we have teachers now who are giving us a different decision than they made months ago. And so we're continuing to make sure that we have up-to-date information about all of our staff, so that we know we have the right number of teachers for that number of kids who are going to be coming back. And we cannot make anybody go back into the classroom. As far as I know, in this country, you can't force any employee to work if they refuse. They may have to go on an unpaid leave, but people just say, make them go back. And it's democracies, we just don't work that way.
Okay. All right, so, gonna double-check my, we have, we have a lot of questions on the chat, and we also had a lot of questions in the, questions before about the impact of distance learning on our students' mental health. And I, I am not a mental health professional, but I can, my connections with a number of high school students as a high school advisor. That situation is real, and the school board understands it, and, and we have heard, we have clearly heard that concern from all of you, and we share it. We are fortunate that we have a emotional and mental well-being team at Rochester Public Schools. I was just on a call last night that is being offered at every building in the district, and it was called Managing the Stress of Distance Learning. The call last night was for the high school families, and it was just an example of the kind of support that the district is trying to give to families and students during, during this year. There is an emotional and mental well-being webpage that lists a building contact for emotional and mental health issues for every building in the district. It has tips for parents on what to watch for in your students. It also has screeners that you can use yourself, or your student can, can evaluate themselves. And then it has contact information for who to contact, and it also has resources, counseling resources, that the district has partnered with to provide for Rochester Public School students. The high schools also are using that Wednesday to provide not just academic, but social and emotional supports as well. And the middle schools are also reaching out to students and families with webinars and other kinds of meetings, online meetings, where students can address some of their concerns. But if these approaches aren't meeting the needs of your family, please reach out to your building principal or to the superintendent, because we need to know if, you know, we're overlooking something or missing something. But these supports are here for families and students to use, and we encourage you to do so. Anybody else have anything on mental health?
Yeah, I would just add that we have a lot of information on our website about the emotional mental well-being support that, that we provide. Kathy, you touched on a lot of them. We do have counselors and social workers, mental health practitioners that can assist students. Now that we are on the 19th, when we move back to Distance Learning Plus at the secondary, if for some reason a student cannot do a session virtually, they can schedule an appointment at the, at the high school or middle school, and they can come in and do that session in person with, with a counselor or a social worker. And majority of our secondary sites have transportation, so if transportation is an issue to get to the school, they can let the school office know, and they can send a van out to pick up that student to come in for that session.
Kathy, there's a question here about, and it's a good one, asking what age group is the rolling case data targeted for? Is there a certain age group, if it's a large population of elderly and 21 to 30-year-olds that are getting sick, that really doesn't impact teachers and children in K-2? And what we know for Olmsted County is that the group that is getting the sickest, the fastest, is our 30 to 59-year-olds. There's an increase in the 25 to 29-year-olds, but the largest group are those who are 30 to 59, which is the vast majority of our staff in our schools. So we are really concerned about that. Apparently in Olmsted County, I think I got this right, the number of people we would consider elderly, it's only, accounts for about 7% of the cases that we've seen in recent months. I keep interrupting, sorry.
No, that's fine. That was, that was great. We had a question about whether elementary needs to be back full-time before secondary can return hybrid. And there's not really a, and Superintendent Munoz, I'll let you say that, but as far as, as far as the board has been told, there's not a relationship that one prevents the other. They're actually on different timelines, and Mike, you might want to talk about that.
Yeah, there, there is no connection there. It's not like we have to do roll and start K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And part of it is because, you know, when you, especially when you get at the high school level, you may have, have a ninth grader taking a junior-level course, so you can't do a roll and start with your, your high school kids especially. But no, we, on the 19th, we will share with the board our, what a hybrid model would look like at the middle school and high school level, and make a recommendation on when that potentially could be started, and what that county rate we believe needs to be at before we start that implementing of a hybrid model. But what happens at the elementary level isn't necessary for the change, only I guess if it got to a situation where our data got so bad that we would have to pull elementary back to DL, then I would think we probably wouldn't be bringing our secondary students in person either.
I know we are, see a lot of questions in the chat, and we also saw a lot of questions in the pre-submitted questions on sports versus our secondary schools. And I'll, I'll start by saying what we, what the board was told on January 5th when we made the decision. The criteria for opening sports is entirely different than the criteria for the Safe Learning Plan. It's an entirely different set of guidelines from the state. And as the, as sports are implemented, they are using the pod concept, like are being used in elementary, where they try to keep students to a group of 25 students or less. And from my understanding, from the information we were told at the board meeting, our teams are trying to keep them in even smaller-sized pods, even within the team. The biggest difference between sports and what we could do at the high school level is if we bring our students back into the buildings, even in a hybrid, and they're attending eight classes a day, their pods, there are no pods of 25, and there are definitely no pods of 14, like we're seeing in some of our elementary sizes. So the, the, the potential for spread in a hybrid middle or high school is far higher than that pod concept in sports. So, and they're also required to mask at all times, both in practice and in games, with some small exceptions. And those are the two big differences, at least, that were presented to the board that I think guided our decision. But Superintendent, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think the only other factor too is, for example, if you have a varsity basketball team, and one of the, either the coach or one of the athletes is positive, then you're quarantining those 12 to 14 athletes and that coach. If that same student walks into the, the school building, he or she may have five or six classes that day, so then you're quarantining all five and six classes of students and five and six teachers that taught those classes. And then even to make it even more interesting, so if I am now one of those teachers that had to quarantine, every other course that I teach, those students will have to go to distance learning because I'm going to be required to be home for 14 days in quarantine, so I will have to switch all of my classes that I teach every day to a DL model because I'm not allowed to come back into the school until after the quarantine period.
And I, that's a really important issue, and some of our, especially some of our parents at elementary, students whose kids have not experienced secondary yet, don't quite get the difference there, that we have lots of options for our secondary students, so they, it's impossible to keep them with the same group all day. You know, they, there may be 36 kids in a social studies class first hour, and then second hour, some of them go to biology, and some of them go to another science class, or math, or French, or orchestra, or whatever. They spread out through the building. They, they can't stay together in one pod. So the spread, and we've seen this nationwide, the spread in high schools is much higher, especially when they're all there together. We have high schools where we're going to have 1,500 people in the building at a time when everybody's back. Certainly there are risks with hybrid for secondary, but with hybrid, at least, there's a little bit better possibility of having kids distanced within the classes.
Heather is taking a look to see what a, we want to make sure that we're getting to some of our highest priority information. So one of the messages I think we're seeing with a lot of the comments is, there's a perception that we're never going to bring kids back to in-person learning. And I want to tell you that I, the district has published this, I wish I had the statement in front of me, but, you know, our priority is to address the health and the learning needs in the most safe way possible. So that doesn't rule out any model, because if we can bring them safely back in person, we will do so. And I think the commitment of the staff to the health and safety of students and teachers and staff, but also the commitment of our, especially our teaching staff and our staff in our buildings, to meet the needs of our students, whether they're with us or whether they're virtual, you cannot deny that that has happened this year in our district. So they all want to be back together. We all want them to be back together, and that's why we're looking at the data very carefully, and starting that conversation next Tuesday to see how we can get students back into the buildings. There was also a question about our teaching staff, and it sounded like it came from a concerned parent, and I appreciate that. Can you talk about how you're taking care of educators with all the changes in schedule that have been talked about? It seems like we're asking them to do the impossible. And I agree, we've been asking them to do the impossible all year. Superintendent, can you talk a little bit about the survey and the engagement process that you've had with staff, and then how that might inform how you're going forward to plan for especially secondary, but also in-person elementary?
Well, what we have implemented with both levels of staff is to, you know, with the elementaries, we were getting ready for rolling out the hybrid model at the elementary level. We had to check back with our elementary staff to see how many, you know, are there new teachers that now have a situation that would not allow them to come back and do in-person instruction? And that could be a variety of things, could be, do they have a medical reason, or somebody they live with has a medical reason? So sometimes that changes. For example, a family member in the fall maybe didn't have a grandparent living in their house, when now, something has changed, and now that grandparent is now in the house, so they may now be, get an exemption because of that. So we re, did that with our elementary staff and our secondary staff as we prepare for bringing them back as well. We've also, in the process of talking to our staff and getting their input- We've also in the process of, of talking to our staff and getting their input on the various learning models as well. And then I would anticipate next week, we will be sending out a, I'm, I'm not going to call it a survey because it's not a survey. It's a, a, I think I would call it a registration questionnaire. And it's going to ask questions like if we, when we move secondary students back to in-person, could be either hybrid or all-in-person, would you send your child to, to school? And then if you qualify for transportation, would you, would you use transportation or would your child drive himself or herself or would you bring your, your student to school? So we need to collect that information to see how many secondary students are going to remain full distance learning and how many will be coming back to either hybrid or full-in-person. So that information we'll be collecting next week. And like I said, it's not a survey, it's not a vote on, on a learning model. It's when we move to in-person, will you send your student to school? And you know, that's information that we need to not only determine our staffing needs, but also to figure out our transportation needs and also to match up our staffing with our, our student needs. So that information will be coming out for the secondary families sometime next week.
I just wanted to touch on two of the questions that are in the chat, especially because we're having our elementary students start in hybrid on Tuesday. And it is, it's a concern about the community COVID case models still being higher now than they were when we were in hybrid last fall. And, and I just want to reemphasize that the reason the governor allowed districts the flexibility to move to a lesser restrictive model than what their cases were was the science that was showing that we were seeing minimal transmission in elementary students. These are students ages 10 and under, from student to student and from student to teacher. So based on the science, the governor made the recommendation that if we implemented additional mitigation, and we should really mention, this isn't just let's send back to school. The teachers have to wear face shields in addition to masks. And there's also requirement for plastic barriers if teachers are going to be closer than three feet to a student. So all of the, the health and safety measures that were in place before are still in place. These are additional ones. And it's the science that led the governor to say that for elementary students only, we think it's safe for them to go back to the building even if the community case rates are the same. So that's the connection between the science of transmission in elementary and going back to school.
Yes, I, I would just add too that one of the other new mitigations is that our staff will be, being tested every other week. For our, our district, it's on Wednesday. So this, that's a new mitigation that, requirement that came out with the new governor's order. And so that's, you know, we'll hopefully be able to catch staff members that may be positive but not showing any symptoms and the test will identify that. And then we can avoid having any, any spread in the, in the school building.
And Kathy, let's just reiterate too, there's a question. Distance learning will still be an option for families even when other kids are going back hybrid or face-to-face?
Yes. So it's 6:57 and I'm going to look at my technical staff to see if there's anything we need to address before we start wrapping up. We still see a lot of questions. Yes, there will still be busing if we go to hybrid for secondary, but that'll be part of the plan that we present on Tuesday. Again, lots of questions that were asked and were not answered in addition to the list of questions. We are going to publish those answers again. And I think another, Jean, I'll, I'll let you hop in on this because I know this is an important issue for you as well. But the board recently, over the summer, had a meeting where we committed to increasing our community engagement, our intentional community engagement. And this is just the first listening session of many more listening sessions. And I also want to make clear that I know that there are other school board members who are also listening in on this meeting. So they are also been provided with a copy of all of the questions and they will be provided with a copy of all the, the questions that have come up in the chat. So everything you are saying is being delivered to the board to, to process as we make our next few decisions.
And before, Mike, sorry, I'm just going to step in again. And I want everybody to know that when you send a letter to the board, an email to the board, everybody gets it. Everybody reads it. We have never had such phenomenal communication. We hear you. We understa, I mean, and, and some of the emails are heartbreaking. You know, your kids are not happy and you're scared and we get that too. But I just need you to know, we're getting your messages and we're rereading them. So keep sending them. But because we can't meet with you face-to-face or because you don't have an opportunity to speak before a board meeting, and we did the math, on average, we'd get four comments per month, per month at a board meeting. We're getting hundreds of emails now and phone calls. So we're listening. I wish we could fix things. I wish we could make this go away right now. Everybody, everybody is, is suffering. Nobody wants this. But please believe we're listening to you.
Yes, I just want to jump in and make sure I clarify something on the testing. The testing is not required of staff to take the test. It's just something that's available to them to test every other week.
Great. All right. So Jean, is there anything else we need to cover?
We are at 7 o'clock. I think we need to be respectful of people's time. And again,